Sure. Thank you. Sure, Rosie, you want to go ahead? Oh, that wasn't meant. That's the... You can have... That's the agenda.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Thursday, July the 18th Camden Planning Board session. We're just having a work session tonight between ourselves, so the... Unless... I mean, it's just a work session. We don't need to ask for any comments that aren't on the agenda. Okay. So the first thing on the list is a comprehensive plan update and an initial discussion about that.
Yeah.
Jeremy?
So I wanted to just touch base about that. There are some things that... I know the comp plan, I think people spent a lot of time and a long time working on that. There were some things in the comp... Or some omissions in the comp plan that we should really address. One thing would be climate change and sea level rise. There's very little mention of sea level rise. There's one section of the ordinance when you're on the harbor section that talks about sea level rise. And climate change is a big issue, and the town is trying to be proactive on it. And we're pursuing lots of grant funding for certain projects, and things need to be consistent with comp plans, and that always helps. So one of the things we're going to do, I'm going to be working on, is drafting some sections on climate change and sea level rise. A couple towns in Maine have really good sections in their comp plan that I'm probably gonna hijack, in essence. Eastport is probably the best one I've seen, surprisingly, Little Eastport. And so I'm gonna look at that, and I just wanted to share that with you. And another one would be the McGuntuk River Restoration. There's really not... There's no mention of that in the comp plan. And we are looking at, right now, doing feasibility studies on dam removal. And again, when you apply for grant funding, not only from federal and state governments, but from nonprofits and foundations, they are looking for community buy-in, and it's consistent with the comp plan and that type of thing. So I'll be drafting a piece on that.
Are they gonna be easy to insert? Because when we were finished with this, we sent to the state, and they made several corrections. And they haven't been put in yet. Those haven't.
They actually have, and I don't know if everyone has a final draft, but we did. Jeanie finalized all that with the state, and we are... Our comp plan is consistent with the state, and that's stated. What date is that, Mark?
June 13th, 2017.
Yep.
Was that the...
It sounds right.
That sounds right. There were some maps that I know that she needed to get, and those have all been finalized with the state. So we're all set with that.
When would these new sections be... We'd try to get them in. Is it five years or every five years?
No, I'm gonna try to get these in. I'm gonna try to get these in right away. Now, those all have to go to voters and all that, so we'll see how long that takes.
It's been approved by the voters, right?
Yes, that has been approved by the voters, and then any changes would need to as well.
December 11th of 2017 is when we got the letter from the state. After their review.
Yeah.
After we were finished.
With all the changes that they suggested.
Yeah.
So it would have been changed after that?
It was. We added what the state needed. There were some changes that the state... And that was happened right when I got here. Jeanie was finalizing that with... I forget the guy. Who was that? Who wrote that letter? Agriculture.
Sophie Scott.
Oh. What's that? Yeah. Well, I'll make sure you get copies of that whole change.
I have a copy, but I'll have to give it back to get it updated.
Yep.
Is that the reformal process of reviewing that in committee every five years? Is that over 10 years?
Every 10.
Every 10 you get your comp plan?
Yeah.
So can we touch a little bit on the river restoration project, on the dams?
Yeah.
What would that look like? What would that entail? Would it decrease the water level on the river?
I haven't seen all of the... There was one feasibility study done on the... The one at the head of the harbor, on what that would look like. And right now, we're seeking funding to keep going up the river, and I can share those with you when I can get them from Allison, the one that we most recently did. Water level's not gonna change a whole heck of a lot from here to... I guess I don't want to speak out of turn.
I can answer that a little bit.
Yeah. Maybe Jeff can go there.
So the Montgomery Dam Study, we have the feasibility assessment in that. If we leave the dam at its existing height, we kind of know where the floods are gonna go, but we have to keep maintaining that. And then the other option was to take it partially down, or just take it down basically completely and leave the sluice gate in that corner over there. And so what we had to do was figure out the hydraulics of the system and where that affects and all the structures back up in. So we have that study in hand. There's no decision made as to what's gonna happen next. But then we use that to move upstream, because the next two dams up are pretty good hazards. And there's no real benefit to them holding their water level back behind them. But then you go up, and you have the next dam up, and it... Why am I trying to blink this today? It's retaining a resource that's adding value, so you need to maintain that water level at that point. And then you have East and West Dams that are holding McGuntuk Lake, so you need to maintain that as well. So it is... Yeah, it is one of those tricky things that it would be nice to restore the river and get fish up, but the top two dam systems need to stay. I mean, and so that's a big hurdle is to get the fish over those. And then do the people want those fish in the lake? I've heard people kind of scared about reintroducing the old fish back. So it's a long process.
Did you work on the comp plan before on this one?
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit.
Yeah. That was a long process, too.
Yes, it was. I know I wasn't here, but I know I've heard a lot about it, so... Those were just thoughts on comp plan update.
Is there gonna be somebody appointed to oversee the implementation of the comp plan?
So that's a good question, because there was talk about creating a comp plan implementation committee. And that is not the intent right now. What I've talked to Audra about is actually going through the comp plan and identifying things that we're doing already that are implementing certain sections of the comp plan. So that's gonna be the plan, is to try to kind of check things off as we move through. And we're gonna rely on me to do that rather than a committee. And you would all be involved in that. It's just the desire to have another committee involved is a lot.
Right.
So... But you're right. I mean, you gotta implement the comp plan.
Yeah.
And so that is the intent. We are... There are... I've got a list going of things that we have done thus far that have already, you know...
Been there? Okay.
Yeah. And we'll keep that going. That's all I have on that.
Any other comments?
Any other comments on that?
Anybody else? No?
And then Coal Court Avenue subdivision update. I did meet with Jim Dorsky the other day about another project and asked him where things were. And they're still with lawyers, so I suspect by the end of August...
And that's on that boundary adjustment?
Yeah, with Rankin's.
Yeah.
Right. There's that structure that's on their property, and they're gonna deed them Rankin's some land.
So that's something to...
Yeah, which is... I thought an awesome thing that they're working together like that to get that done.
And it's still taking a bit of time.
And then zoning ordinance amendments. So we had talked...
We're not accepting any comment from anybody in the public.
If people want to comment, I think it's great.
Do you think we've got someone here who... Do you have any... Rob, I mean, you came in because you're interested in the Coal Court Avenue, right?
It's your call. It's your meeting.
I think you're here, and you came hoping to say something.
Yeah, and maybe I think since Robert's here, I was gonna touch on Robert's thing on my little list. So it's really not relevant to the subdivision piece. It's more of a broader question, so I'll touch on that. Go ahead. How it's going?
Yeah, for Tibbetts?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is going on with that?
They... We've already reviewed kind of draft plans of that subdivision, and they'll be in for final subdivision approval, I think, by the end of August. They were just having to hammer out some... There's some property line issues. Rankin's had constructed small buildings on Tibbetts' property. And so the lawyers are involved, and actually Tibbetts is actually deeding Rankin's some land so that they don't have to move the structures, and it can just stay. So that lot line needs to be tweaked, and lawyers are just doing what they're doing. And I think by the end of August, I would assume we'll have a final subdivision plan to review.
So the plan is to subdivide that property into three pieces?
Yeah.
Yeah, our substantive review happens at the... When it's final, then we give it the full site plan review.
Yep.
Opportunity for public comment at that time.
Yep, and everyone get notice like they do normally. Zoning ordinance amendments.
Yeah, do you have anything to say about... Are you gonna take care of it, Jeremy?
Well, I think you're probably here about your request or what you sent and submitted.
You know, the ordinance change.
Yes.
So my... The issue, the question I'd like to raise, and this is... There's no... I have no ulterior motive here.
Can you pass him the microphone?
I have no ul...
You just say your name, too, please.
Okay, Rob Dwellie. Anything else? Camden. So, you know, I have no ulterior motive here. I mean, I have... I am a builder. I've done condominiums here in the village. I certainly have experience. And it sort of piqued my interest when I saw it, because my radar just went up, and it's like, wow, what a great place to build some residential units. And then it's... So that started me. Then I came to the meeting that you guys had the first time, when I did show up, and I sort of listened to you guys talk about the comprehensive plan. And I think we were even talking about old buildings that night. I forget what it was.
Demolition delay, probably.
Yeah, demolition delay. And it just sort of started me thinking about quality of architecture, quality of town, you know, maintaining a village, maintaining tourist income, just the whole thing that got wrapped up in that conversation you guys all had that night. So I think you were there when I walked into the office, and I said, so why is it not residential? You know, why is it industrial? Why are we... I mean, I do live there. I should qualify myself. I do live around the corner on Lime Rock. So I asked the question. It's like, why are we introducing more traffic? Why are we introducing more trucks? Why are we introducing all that in a neighborhood which is predominantly village? When you look at the map of the town, it's predominantly surrounded by village. So with no ulterior motive, I'm just raising my hand and saying, why is this happening? You know? And I don't know if the owner even has thought about this. I have no contact with the owner, so I don't know if he would change his viewpoint, if he knew that he had an option to change to village. And so that, from a sales standpoint, does that enhance? Does that broaden his customer base? If he can list it and sell it as residential space? It's just unbelievably easy residential building property. It's flat. It's big. It's got town sewer. It's got town water. And I think with some real creativity... Rosie, you could certainly understand this. It could be an incredible piece of property. So that's in a nutshell. I mean, it's more than I wrote. So I wrote the ordinance, you know, and I wrote, you know, whatever I wrote. And Jeanie sent it back to me and said, no, 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 this is all not complete. You don't have this, and you don't have this, and you don't have this. And I said, it's not for me. You know, if it were for me, then I'd fill out all that stuff. But I'm just Rob Dwellie, citizen, builder, live in the neighborhood, asking the question, why? That's it.
Rob, do you mind handing Eleanor the mic?
Hi, I'm Eleanor Mason-Peters, and I am a budding to Tibbetts. And so I've been there 35 years. And I remember a few years ago, when they were starting to write the comprehensive plan, maybe 10 years ago, and they talked about that, because I questioned it also, because my big concern is PG Willie, who is ever-expanding back there. And everybody's like, well, you knew. You moved into industrial, and that's how it is. But meanwhile, there's all this residential that's grown up in that area, including the low-income housing, Highland Avenue, Quarry Hill. I mean, it's just more and more residential. New houses go up in that neighborhood. So they said, well, no, we have to have 10% industrial in town, because that's how we want it to be. And I was like, but there is no industry. I mean, Tibbetts is the end of it, really, in this town. I mean, there was the mill and the tannery, and as we know, it's happening everywhere. That is dying. And so anyway, I didn't pursue it, but as a neighbor, I am very concerned about the ever-expanding oil company back there, who every time I walk by there, they seem to have more and more propane tanks. So for me, I feel like with all that residential there, that's totally inappropriate. But I know they've been there for 100 years or whatever. I don't know how long. But my feeling is that we should... I would definitely be in favor of pushing more residential in that area. And we're always talking about we don't have enough housing in the village. There's this huge swath of land, so I'm not sure if that can be changed. I don't know if this comprehensive plan has made a remark about that.
Yeah, unfortunately.
I mean, the other question is, is this the right venue to be asking that question as well?
Well, I was gonna just touch on it, just on my zoning ordinance amendment piece. So... And that was my first item. I was gonna talk about Rob's request. Well, let me first start by saying ordinance amendments that would go to voters in November need to go and be done, ready for the select board to put onto a hearing on August 20th. So the likelihood... So the fact is, we are not going to be doing any zoning ordinance amendments right now for November, because we just don't have... There's just not enough time to get those done for November. That said, it doesn't mean we can't do special town meetings, though we really don't want to do those. I'd like to get things right and have them done for June, so that when we have a town meeting in June, we can spend, be thoughtful, and be deliberate on things, and spend... Give everything the time that it needs. I mean, I think, look at what we did for marijuana and fast food and the Village Hotels. We spent a lot of time talking about that, deliberating over those things. And all of these things, this included, needs deliberation and thought and comment from the public, and needs to be thought about honestly and realistically. So I am meeting with the select board at a work session on the 30th, I believe, to talk about priorities from a zoning ordinance amendment and what things they would like to see moving forward. And I have a list of them. One is the Coal Court Avenue petition request, and that was Rob's request to go from industry to village. Now, keep in mind, zoning ordinance amendments need to be consistent with the comp plan. And so when Rob first came in and had this conversation with me, I went to the comp plan. And I very much appreciate and understand your point about housing, and we need housing. We do. The comp plan for the industry zone over there speaks to actually about expanding... Not expanding really the industrial zone, but dividing... Getting rid of the road, actually, Coal Court Ave, and splitting that between the two lots to actually give them more opportunity for things. And that's just what the comp plan says currently. So going to residential right now...
Is it already on Coal Court Avenue? Would you dead-end it?
I'd... I'm not sure how. I haven't thought about it.
The town should consider abandoning Coal Court Avenue and Virginia Avenue in the industrial district and assigning that roadbed right away to the adjacent parcels. The town should consider rezoning those residential properties to allow the industrial district parcels to be contiguous. The town should consider rezoning those residential properties.
Around Coal Court and...
That's what it seems to imply.
I assume.
To allow the I district parcels to be contiguous. Well, you're getting the thrust of the idea.
No, no, I get it. I just... Yeah.
So we obviously need to look at that.
It was brought up before, this idea, like, not by a citizen, just by me and just in general speaking. But I thought you said something. So we thought, Rob, did you sort of... Was this... We're talking about like, any citizen can make a proposal for a zoning change? Is that sort of what we're... And so you commented in it.
You didn't know that, did you?
I did not know that.
It's very odd. I've never been in it, worked for a town that has that provision in there. Normally, either someone has to have right title and interest in a property, or the municipality can initiate zone changes. I mean, it's very odd, because if I'm... All right. You don't like me. We don't get along.
It's true.
I'm gonna come in and say, you know what? I want to actually... I'm gonna petition. We zone his property. Are you one?
About industrial yard, put it in the comp plan?
Or resource protection. You know, that way he can never do anything with his lot. And if I get the town to go along with it, then all of a sudden, your lot could be resource protection, and then vice versa. Then you can come back at me with no right title and interest in the property to say, now I want to zone that property. I mean, it just is very odd. So I think the real avenue would really to be to petition this, in my view, is to petition the town leaders, the select board, and say, hey, we're really concerned about this issue. Do you think... What do you think about a zone change there, and would the town initiate that zone change? I mean, that's how I think things should happen. Other than that, I think you ought to have right title and interest in the property.
Yeah, but there's no standing. It's like...
It's very odd.
It's written now.
Yeah, and I have an email into Bill Kelly asking that question, because it's really odd. It says...
Is that in the town plan or the...
It says... I can read this. It says...
Are we in the comp plan or the...
No, we're in the zoning ordinance XV-1. It says that no land use regulation or amendment thereof or change in the official zoning map shall be adopted until after the selectmen of the town have held a public hearing thereon at least 10 days beforehand, before it is submitted to the legislative body for consideration. Public notice for the hearing shall be made at least 10 days prior to the hearing. Amendments to this ordinance shall be considered following petition, recommendation of the planning board, or motion of the selectmen. The petitioner shall bear the cost of advertising in any of the posters for notification neighboring property owners. Now, my gut says... My gut says is that what they were trying to get at was that anyone can petition for a zoning ordinance amendment, not a map amendment. That's what my gut says.
Therefore, you could change what's allowed in the zone, but you can't change the outline of the zone.
Correct. I mean, that's...
That would make more sense to me. I don't see how individual citizens can start rearranging where zones are in town.
Agreed. Though individual citizens, you know, like we did with fast food, right? People were concerned about fast food restaurants, so...
But that was scripted on town-wide, right?
Those district lines were, I think, established in the early 90s, and they were done very carefully, because we tested those time and time again to move in... It makes sense where they are now. Even to like what lots they go around.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean they can't change in the future.
Right.
But it... Yeah, this ordinance, also in here is clean up the ordinance. There's so much in here that is... It doesn't make sense. You read paragraphs, and like, the paragraphs die. You wonder what it's trying to say, or words don't make sense. It's all over the place. And honestly, my gut says is that was the intent, was that anyone can petition the select board, the planning board, to change uses or performance standards and all that kind of stuff, but really not to get to map amendment. And, you know, I mean, it says what it says, so that is what the law is.
But either way, so that's in there right now. You've got to inquire to the town attorney for that one. But there's also the potential to petition the select board, and you think that's the proper avenue?
In my opinion, it's a more appropriate avenue than having anyone petition the town to rezone someone's property without their...
Yeah, and that's, I guess, the question that Rob raised. Has anybody... Has the owner even thought about that?
I've talked to the owner yesterday, actually.
Yeah.
And had a good conversation. I think he's... I mean, he is a... You know, he's a businessman, and he does industrial uses, and he's commercial activity, so I think...
But he's also selling.
He's also selling, correct. I mean, one way to look at it, too, would be to maybe allow... You know, we have this provision, which is in 8-77 in the ordinance, which is the business opportunity zone, which was created not too long ago, the BaaS, we call it, which allows different types of uses than what are currently allowed in a zone.
Or a mixed-use residential.
Yeah, it allows those kinds of things.
The genesis behind like BaaS zone and this with the comp plan committee, it was looking to be more inclusive as a town, as opposed to exclusive. Like, we welcomed larger developments in this BaaS zone, and it only amounted to like three lots in the town that had those parameters. And then we did something over in Millville, where in that zone, we encouraged, and there's a couple places that have been built out that way, with... What would you call it? Like owners of small businesses, like electrical contractor, to live above where they work.
Right.
And I think it was the same attitude with that industrial district, that there's value in a community that supports light industrial uses.
Right. We're losing Tibbetts. They're moving out. They're vacating that building.
You know, years ago, when Tibbetts was, you know, at full speed, and there were a lot of people working there, it was like, sort of like, very good to see those people come and go to work.
As far as an industrial neighbor, Tibbetts has been... You know, whatever they're doing over there has been a low impact and a quality, you know, a good neighbor. I think the concern comes from what could go into an industrial zone. You heard Eleanor mentioning, you know, PG Willie's buying it up and wanting to do storage tanks there. I mean, that's an industrial zone, but you're right in the middle... To their description, you are still right in the middle of a neighborhood. You can say that it's industrial. There is a swath running along Lime Rock that is industrial, but there's also houses all around it on all sides, and...
And then you can't forget like the transfer station. I mean, that has impact as well.
Yeah, the transfer station. You mean in Rockport?
Well, it's in Rockport, but it's...
Right, but that's... I mean, again, we're talking about anything like... Union Street has ham and lumber. That's in Rockport, and then it has Rankin's, and maybe like a...
Just partly in Camden.
The line goes right through.
Right, so but either way, you have those two businesses on Union Street. The rest of the houses are all residential there. Then you've got Virginia going back.
But oddly enough, on that Union Street, you look carefully at the zoning map, opposite Rankin's, a zone comes in from Elm Street.
Yeah.
And includes that, so there's...
Is that the language school? Is that possibly what it is?
No, it's... Oh, God.
To my point, you've got some mostly residential on Union, and then Coal Court Avenue and Virginia Avenue, the two you referenced. Coal Court is half-residential. It goes halfway down, it's residential, and then you get to the property in question. And then on Virginia's side, again, one side of Virginia is all residential, and then you have the left detachment to Tibbetts over there, which is like they put a new gym in the studios. And again, those are low-impact businesses. I don't think anybody's questioning those. And then in the end, you've got...
That's pretty small scale.
I'm sorry. Ordering on several sides, you've got residential all around and across the street from the property in question.
Yeah, V3 comes in the middle of Union Street there.
See that?
Right.
It's a red commercial business going.
The red is the industrial.
Oh, this is...
What if we just make the V next to the industrial, industrial, and call it done?
Yeah, that's a good idea. It's all houses in there. That's why. You mean down at the bottom there?
Right here, Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the Coal Court Ave bit.
I'm just joking, playing that as...
That's the Coal Court Ave bit.
The difficulty with Camden is getting out of Camden. It's road access, isn't it? I mean, that's a huge disadvantage for industry. The difficulty of getting in and out of Camden is one of the difficulties with attracting industry, I'm sure.
Right. I mean, if you drive over there and you've seen it... Right. I mean, if you drive, if you drive over there, you've seen it, but Coal Court Avenue now has two columns on the end, where the, where the sewers have collapsed, 'cause the trucks are turning, and they've collapsed the sewers. That's just one impact that we see, and that, that street is all chewed up now, 'cause the trucks, ever since they closed down Curtis, the trucks, all the trucks are coming down Park and then coming over Coal Court Avenue.
And that's something we can look at, too. We can talk about where trucks can go and can't go.
Because you can't go up, that Lime Rock turn is ridiculous, it's coming from the other side. And so to Rosie's point, it is really difficult access. It's not exactly easy to get to, um...
Is trucks driving the central center? There's trucks from P G Willie, there's trucks from the Hardest?
Right. They're all, they're all going, Hammond is coming by there all the time, like everybody's going right by, right by there.
Isn't, isn't part of it more like a philosophical approach to things, too? You know, as opposed to counting trucks, is there another part that we should be looking at in the future, too, about, do we want the entirety of Camden to be residential?
Well, and I think that's the struggle, and I think that's, that's the conversation that, you know, I think the select board will probably have. I mean, we hear a lot of, you know, Camden is, it's tourist-based economy right now, and can we survive long-term on a tourist-based economy?
Yeah.
Um, not sure you can. I mean, you look, you look at Bar Harbor, I mean, Bar Harbor shuts down in the summertime, I mean, in the wintertime. It shuts down completely. Um, there's a couple of restaurants open, um, and it's something that we need, we need to have a, a discussion about. I mean, the intent in the comp plan, which was just from two thousand seventeen, was for it to not go away.
I think there's more of a demand for smaller business, like there's a gym in there, and there's...
Fair, and all those uses, all those uses can go, and, you know, all those uses can come in. We can also get a, you know, we may find a tech company that wants to come in and needs all that land, and is not gonna have any little or no impact on neighbors. I mean...
That would be very desirable, something like that.
If there's anything, you know, we can try to look at performance standards and other standards that, you know, minimize impact and mitigate impacts on neighbors.
Traffic studies.
You know?
I guess part of it is, what I think is maybe a little unsettling is the fear of the unknown. Like, why subdivide if you don't have a buyer? Why, what, what is the intent? It doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, is it just three lots?
I mean, if I had, if I had a piece of land, I could subdivide into three pieces, and I wanted to maximize return on my investment, I'd try and sell it as three different pieces of land. I mean...
And likely, you're gonna get, I mean, you're gonna get smaller buildings if they keep them separate, right?
Yeah.
You're gonna get smaller buildings, which are likely a smaller industrial, and everyone says industrial. I mean, it is in the industrial district, but if you look at the uses, professional offices can go there, right? Health services office, vets, you know, um, we don't, if you look at our zoning district, I mean, our zoning ordinance, and you look what type of businesses we allowed in Camden, we, we are very, very, very restrictive everywhere. I mean, we really don't allow retail at all in B three, except if you're in an existing building and it can only account for a certain percentage. Um, that's the B three, you know, and then we get into the B T R, you get a little bit more, and the B one, you get more, and then we get into the harbor, and it's generally marine stuff. Um, but outside of that, we have the B R and the B R, um, you know, along Mount Batty and the Tannery site.
There are areas industrial in Camden.
What's that?
What other areas?
It's all industrial right there.
That's the only, that's the only industrial zone in Camden, if you want, if you wanna call it industrial zone. I mean, that's what we define it as, but then we have the B R, which is likely the most similar, but you don't get the intensive uses as intensive as that. But the B four is more of a neighborhood, um, district, like kind of neighborhood, commercial, retail.
It was industrial, and now it's all condominiums. How did that happen?
Ox Mill?
Yeah, that went into this business transition. That was likely happened when, you know, when M B N A came in.
Or when they left.
Or when they left. I mean, I, I don't know what it was zoned, honestly. Eleanor, before, before M B N A got there, before B T R, I don't know what it was zoned. Um, but we don't have much commercial space. What's that?
It can be changed. Obviously, that was changed.
Yes.
Yeah.
It can, I mean, things can change. They have to be consistent with comp plans.
Well, depend, well, but also depending on what's been decided in the comp plan.
Right.
I mean, and, and as a design professional, I feel really strongly that the, the comprehensive plan and, and the town layout and ordinances really need to reflect best practices overall, and what's in the best interest of the town overall for the long term, and sometimes that means making difficult decisions about individual pieces of town, right? I think it would be difficult to take out the industrial zones altogether from town, and say, we're not having any industry in Camden. I just don't, I mean, that's not...
That's a slippery slope. I think it was talking about one lot.
But we have a small area right now for that industrial zone. It's the smallest amount we have in the whole of town.
Rosie, when the comp plan was being prepared, it, it looked at things in a much larger context, and it asked about what people wanted. And people were notified, maybe not by certified letter or something, but when they lived in the area, they had at least two or three chances to come and talk to the comp plan committee, which was the planning board, about what they envisioned or what they saw for that area. Now, remember, that one was the industrial, industrial zone, and I don't think I heard the sort of things I'm hearing now...
Right.
Back then. It wasn't, it wasn't about making the entire area residential.
Right.
People supported that. And that's when they were talking about, like you were saying, uh, tech industry. You know, there was thought that it would go up on Sagamore Farm, but that people said, or we thought like, if they could land something in that industrial zone, it'd be like a home run.
Right. And you gotta think, I mean, it's, you got utilities right to the site.
The, the hard thing is not knowing, right? As a homeowner and a butter, you kind of don't know what's going to come in there, so you could imagine anything.
It's industrial, anything pretty much.
But the reality is, though, if somebody wants to buy those lots and put something on it, they've then got to meet all the setback and noise requirements and buffer requirements of the town, and whatever they do has to come before the planning board and get approved, and there'll be opportunity for public comment.
And interestingly...
And, and, and we do modify things according to what neighbors' concerns are. I mean, I think any, any that I've been on the planning board and has dealt with, everybody's gonna work at the end of the evening feeling okay about how it's got resolved.
Yeah, and it's not just with the industrial zone, because all the people came in when there was the thought that, uh, a bed and breakfast inn might, might serve restaurant meals to outsiders, and it's like, it was the same sort of alarm as if John's Mandel was moving in over in the industrial zone.
And it's getting clear about what that's going to involve. And again, as neighbors, any development that happens there, as, as neighbors, you can show up and, and, and they're gonna need to be clear about how much traffic there's going to be, how many trucks. We can put restrictions on hours of delivery and things like that. So we often put pieces into the final agreement that takes into concern the neighbors. I mean, even if we, you know, and we can't necessarily shift around the fundamental structure of the town, but, but we can put individual pieces in place to, to make sure that it doesn't negatively impact anybody.
And you, and you can't zone things out of town either, right? You, you can't come up with certain uses you don't want in town and say, we're, we're gonna prohibit, say, strip clubs from town. You cannot do that under, under the U S Constitution. You cannot do that. You just can't. So you have to always provide a location for certain uses. And how you balance that, one thing I just noticed going through this and listening to what Rosie said, I, I agree with you, but what we do a lot, like we did with the village piece to allow restaurant food service, is we made that a special exception, because then you look at the special exception standards, it's really trying to mitigate the impacts on neighbors. In the industrial zone, the only special exception is for gas stations. So if someone went in there with a manufacturing plant, that is not a special exception that has this other set of review beyond the planning board that has to go to the zoning board of appeals as special exception, where they actually look at a lot of these impacts on neighbors. Maybe what we can do is we can look at moving some of the uses that are allowed in the industrial zone into the special exception section. That may be a way to...
So we give them a much higher level of review.
Uh-huh.
Residential uses?
What's that?
Like residential uses?
But that would be one way of keeping all the, that would be one way of keeping the map layout intact, and being able to be very, have a high degree of control over what goes, not what goes in there, but how they operate.
How they operate.
Right.
Right. I mean, if you look at special exceptions...
A gas, I mean, a fuel station makes sense to be a special exception.
Right. Um, it talks about the proposed use not having, they gotta review the zoning board of appeals, whether or not it'll have a significant adverse of impact on the value or quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than would normally occur from such use in the zoning district. They look at compatibility with proposed uses, you know, the uses around them, intensity of the use, operations, the hours, expansive pavement, traffic, noise dust, odor, vibration. Right now, traffic for us, if someone wanted to do a project over there, we really don't have any right to go down the traffic route unless it was tripping a D O T traffic permit requirement, unless you're in the special exception piece. Um, so...
It sounds like traffic's causing an issue. I mean, it sounds like traffic right now is...
So maybe that's something we wanna look at, is maybe that's the, a better way to approach it, and then think about the B O S, maybe adding the B O S to the I?
Good.
It's just...
And I can read to the B O S, 'cause...
Does the B O S allow for a mixed-use residential?
The B O S does.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I never thought really, myself personally, it's just my own personal opinion, that it had to be straight residential, but like a mixed-use as opposed to industrial would be a lot more preferable, just from, from a...
And I have that on my list, industry zone, um, B O S, question mark, is on my list, so that may be a way to do it, and then I can look at special exceptions for that industry zone, too.
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to throw a lot of things in that special exception, but, um, you know, you wanna be able to, I know neighbors don't, may not wanna hear, but you wanna be able to offer developers or businesses an opportunity to do things without a lot of, um, um, you know, just, what's that?
Hurdles to jump through.
Yeah, without a whole lot of hurdles to jump through.
Well, Tibbetts has been a fine neighbor.
Right.
They've been very good, or effective. I have no objections to that.
Yeah, I mean, I gotta think, you know, Camden being Camden, I gotta think anyone that's gonna come to Camden to do a business, whether in, in industrial use of some sort, is gonna be cognizant of their neighbors and is gonna be...
I mean, you say that, but Rockport's Rockport. You see what they do over there, right, with their library and everything, I mean...
That's Rockport.
I said, Rockport's Rockport, but I mean, you can never predict, that's all I'm saying.
You can never predict. So you can plan the best you can, and, and maybe looking at B O S and special exceptions.
The idea of putting some of these into special exceptions, um, you know, a manufacturing facility would wanna go in, you know, special exception.
It's like, you know, certain words are the ones that are like inflammatory. When, as soon as you hear like manufacturing, it's like, oh, oh, my God.
Well, I mean, they're manufacturing at Tibbetts, and you've heard testimony from three people today say that Tibbetts is fine.
Right, I'm just saying when you hear...
It's, what are you manufacturing? I mean, the terms are necessarily broad.
Well, but under the purpose, all right, it says to encourage non-polluting industrial development.
Yeah.
At reasonable density.
Right.
Okay, so...
Mm-hmm.
It gives neighbors a voice, and that industrial zone is surrounded by residential neighborhoods. I mean, it's very clear when you look at the map, that there are residences all the way around that, so I think having an extra level of, taking an extra level of care to make sure that it's not going to create undue disturbances wouldn't do any harm.
So can I throw something out there, just a, um, concept we might wanna think about? And it's, uh, just pertaining to residential neighborhoods. Um, something about maybe just posting signs that say, caution, you are entering a residential neighborhood?
You have to do that on the whole end of Camden.
Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, you just put it on neighborhood streets, you know, around here, you know? Caution, you're entering residential neighborhoods, you know, and I just wonder if that would, you know...
I don't think it'll mean much to the truck drivers, but it might, it might to just general...
Well, it, it might be subtle, and it might have, you know, some...
Another question on that area of our community, like, um, what does, what's the impact of Quarry Hill? It seems in a way Quarry Hill's impact on many things, like traffic, would be almost to the same extent of what might be in that industrial zone.
They definitely had a traffic study, 'cause they have two new curb cuts.
That many?
I mean, so Tibbetts is looking at new curb cuts.
But I'm talking about what's the reality now. There's a, there must be a ton of people that go into that facility every day, not that just live there, but working at Anderson Inn.
Well, I, I know, but it used to be a hospital, too, so, I mean, during that period, I mean, there were a ton of people going in, less coming out.
Between, there's a lot of deer that were in between there, too.
So I'm just saying, like, uh, why would something in the I zone be any more of a threat to some than what already exists in, like, the Quarry Hill zone? Just putting it out there.
Well, because Quarry Hill doesn't have storage tanks.
Right.
Public utility is something that could go into an industrial zone. Um, you know, truck terminal could go into an industrial zone, not saying it would, you know, warehouse could go in there. Um, that would be bringing more trucks in. So, I mean, there, there's, I think, you might, you have some deliveries going to Anderson Inn for sure, but you don't have the regular truck traffic that you have around that, around that industrial zone. Um, again, you have to remember the Eleanor named off, but you have, you know, Tibbetts, I don't think does a lot of delivery. I think they're mostly like UPS trucks or whatever, so I don't see much of them. But you've got the recycling facility, you know, the, the, whatever they call it, the exchange facility. You've got, um, you've got, uh...
Ham and lumber.
Ham and lumber, you've got, uh...
P G Willie.
P G Willie, right, right, all right back there, and the trucks are always coming to those three businesses. They're just coming nonstop around that down Coal Court Avenue.
Down Lime Rock Street?
To Lime Rock, correct. Comes to the backside there, yeah. 'Cause they can't make a turn, they can't make a turn off Union Street. They would either have to come through Rockport, which is not gonna happen.
A lot do, though.
Right. And then, or they'd have to come back and then do that V backwards. But we, we're taking this discussion, I think, pretty long.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, I, I mean, I get Robert coming from, and Eleanor, I hear what you, I, I think if we can try to look at B O S and special exception, I mean, I don't wanna see, just from a planning and development perspective, I don't wanna see, I'd hate to see more, um, you know, commercial land go away in town. I think we need to provide land for opportunity for businesses in town. And I know we haven't seen it, and people say, well, they're not coming. I mean, Tibbetts is there, no one's taking that land. Um, we may, and I think we need to provide land and have land available. I mean...
Tannery.
Right? I mean, I think everyone knows the story on the Tannery right now. I mean, this was an old mill that created...
Jobs.
Jobs, and created a lot of pollution that we're trying to clean up. It's zoned B R, right? That's our, our next almost intensive use than the industry.
They wanna turn it into a tot lot.
And, and I'm getting, I'm not sure what a tot lot is, but a kid playground, or a play, yeah.
Tot lot.
I like that. I got two tots in the house, so...
I'm not the tots.
Hand, foot, and mouth, so...
Some of us still, some of us still have the kids.
But, I mean, you know, it's so hard, it's so hard in Camden. I mean, we don't have a lot of land. Here's a vacant piece of land, um, and, and it is, it's a challenge.
I just see like the town turning into be more of a tourist mecca, because what we, and a lot of people in the administration of this town, get down on their knees for anything that Main Street retailers want, tourism. So you go out there, you know, what, and what, what do we, what's the benefit we get? We could leave here and walk into that area now, and the benefit to me is, I don't find a benefit in dealing with people that are coming from all over the U S and pushing their way around. I, I just don't. I, I think, I think we bend over much too much for Main Street, and we give them a lot, and what do we get? Squat.
Well, you get their property taxes, which help pay funeral municipal services.
Yeah, property taxes, everybody's getting, we, we're all paying a lot of property taxes.
We can, I mean, so we're gonna bring in climate change and sea level rise in the comp plan, and that actually plays into zoning and planning. Like, if we just go for tourism, and we have a spring that carries through to July, where it's just the weather's no good, the merchants aren't gonna be able to make up that year. You have July and August to make your money. So it's difficult to, you know, continually crunch the industry and the commercial uses, like we're saying. But we need to think about climate change, because we don't know what the future's gonna bring, and if we leave ourselves just mainly residential to an elderly population, we're vulnerable.
'Cause they're gonna be moving out. When, as soon as they can't afford taxes anymore, they're out of here. Like, I, I mean, I can identify with that.
Well, so that's one of the dangers in having it all be residential and not having any end... any industry, industry is a generator in general of higher taxes, right, which is one of the reasons municipalities want to have not just residential.
It's diversity.
Yeah, and it's diversity, and it's the opportunity for people to work close to home, and...
Tourist economy.
And in a way, a quality of life, seeing people work.
Yeah.
It's very cool.
You know, it's, it's funny you bring that up at this meeting, because I, I was thinking along the same lines, you know, what are we doing for our quality of life?
Right.
That's what's happening.
Because every, every time... Our quality of life, not New Jersey and Connecticut.
Every time you talk about a situation, it's like, well, it makes it more convenient for the tourists.
Yeah.
You know, put these signs, create more parking, do the, do everything for the tourists. And I agree, I agree with you.
But I have to say, but one of the reasons, you know, so the restaurants serve the tourists, but they also stay open year-round, which means that in the middle of winter, we can go downtown, and we've got a great choice of restaurants to choose from.
That's where we're lucky, and Bar Harbor isn't.
Right, and we, which not all places have that, because we have enough of a year-round population, but if the tourists weren't here, we wouldn't have access to all those things in the winter, so I mean, I think, you know, it's not like the tourists are a negative part, they're an essential part of what makes Camden right.
I'm not saying they're negative.
It's just that we don't want it to be exclusively geared up for tourists, there's...
We've got to look at the entire picture.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tourism is a worldwide thing, I mean, it's a huge industry around the world, it's not just in Camden. I mean, in Venice, they can't handle all the tourists, that's where people...
Yeah, and read what people are thinking about Venice now, especially the ones who are trying to live there.
Right.
And can't afford to, I mean, that's, that's an extreme example.
I mean, I, I come from, I come from a very, very poor area of the world, and also from in, in inland Maine as well, and to be the job opportunities here that exist in terms of tourism and all the rest of it, I would never, ever knock that. My kids have jobs because of the tourism here, I'm not knocking the tourism, I know how people struggle half an hour inland, so I don't think the tourism's a bad thing here at all, it's wonderful, it's what makes this a wonderful town, but I'm not dissing the other concerns at all.
But it's getting to be the whole pie, you know, there's that much that isn't, and then, as I say, what, what gets me is how, like, the town, whatever you want to refer to that, is how it sort of kowtows to anything to do with tourism.
But that's your perception, that's not necessarily, that's your perception.
I don't think that speaks to this board, I don't think any of the decisions that we've taken since I've been here have been all about tourism, so, but I mean...
Where are the industries then that you want here, where are they? Why don't they come here?
Well, I believe, like, things have a way of happening, like, this is, this is an industry, but look at that boathouse that's being done over at the end, opposite the library, that, that happened, that's, that's a benefit that came to this town that was never thought of a couple of years ago, and I, from what I've heard of it, that, that particular building has an interesting future, when the owners might not be using it anymore, that it will be more, more oriented towards public use, that's a benefit. I, I contend that people in development of the town, like Jeremy, or people that he might know, if they, if they could reach out to people that they know and introduce them to possibilities here, like Mr. Reed, who has this boathouse going, he was the president of New York Stock Exchange and the president of Citigroup, he probably knows people that he could say, you know, we're living now in this cool little town up there, and there's opportunity for you to bring part of your operation up here with 60 people, or 50 people, or 40 people to work, it could be in a place in the middle of town, or Sagamore Farm, that's what I believe there is potential of happening here, it's outreach.
It's true, and I'm working on those things every day, so, making calls.
And we have, and we have a professional now who's, who's...
What's that?
We now, we now have a professional on staff whose mandate it is to actually encourage economic development in town.
No, but some of this happens on a personal level, too.
It does, absolutely, sometimes it's the only way it happens.
Like, I remember from my own architectural practice, like, clients that came and then referred to others, they heard about us because they're sitting next to somebody on first class on an international flight, that's people like us, is what we call it, that's how, that's how stuff comes.
It's true.
Like, Mr. Reed has a very good opportunity to bring some interest, or some interesting business, or industry, low-impact industry to this town than we might.
And that being said, we have to have some space somewhere in town that that can happen.
That's why I'm saying, I hope it does...
And we don't have the space, isn't the opportunity, we can't make anything happen, but we can, we can offer the opportunity for it to happen, I guess, right, I mean, that's what planning and architecture does, we don't make anything happen, but we create that possibility, and it's always a balance, how do you get a balance between making it a really nice place to live for everybody who's local, and making sure we've got a mix of...
And it's balancing uses that are adjacent to each other the best you can, and what I see going through here compared to, you know, what, what you got here, the village, is that we have some, I think we have some room to try to balance that commercial, the heavier industrial use with the neighborhood by, by looking at special exceptions, those standards, because they are, it's very different than just a planning board review, I mean, you look at the planning board review standards, it's, look at stormwater, you look at erosion, you look at, you know, those kinds of things, you don't really get into the, how is this going to impact the neighbor in that, we could probably do that much better by adding some things to the special exception list, and I'll look at that, I'll bring that up to the select board next, next time I meet with them. Sound good? Okay.
Yeah, thank you for coming in.
I just, I wanted, I wanted to say, I just, you know, I've not spent a lot of time in these kind of meetings, and you're a very impressive group. It's impressive that you bring the differences of perspective that you have, and your willingness to listen to each other, although you disagree, it's just, it's remarkable, how it happened, but you guys are a bunch of cool dudes.
Coming back.
We don't get that much, come in all the time.
Did you hear that, everybody? Somebody goes to the counter.
Don't we have an open seat?
Yeah, you want to go in front of her?
How much do you like us, Rob?
Just the right skill set.
All right, so I'll, I'll include that on my list, for sure, to talk with the select board, that should be an easy one, and I can't fathom how or why, if that, if they say, Jeremy, yes, makes sense, I don't know how that would not get approved by voters next June, right, I mean, that's total realistic.
So that's going to be a year in June?
Right.
That's, so not this coming June, one after is when it would be?
You mean, 2021?
No.
This coming, next June.
2020, so not, not 2019, a year in June.
Not a month ago?
Yes.
Yeah, couldn't happen a month ago.
That's right, June's not here anymore. We need to keep...
Summer, really, it's hot, yeah, one of those for the rebels, June.
And we were doing so well.
We were. All right.
Thank you, Chair Wilson. Now go back to the Senate.
Quickly go through this...
Yeah, Eleanor?
No, thank you.
Just the rest of my list, and I'd like to get your thoughts on them, again, I can't do them all, likely, but, so I also have on my list is accessory structures and accessory uses, it's an odd thing, but if you go through into the RU1 district section, you know, you cannot have a shed or detached garage on your property in RU1, because we do not allow accessory structures in RU1.
That doesn't make a lot of sense.
Arm land, didn't it?
Yeah.
So are all those camps?
It's all the lake.
You can't, there's no, you can't allow accessory structures.
You can't have a shed or a garage on the lake.
For the zoning ordinance.
How are they doing it, though, so, because they've been grandfathered, so people are renovating existing ones.
People just, or have we ignored it, I don't know.
Is there a date on that? There's no date on that.
No. I found that, even, even you go to the rural recreation, which is the Snowball properties, no accessory uses or accessory structures allowed. So if the pump house goes, because there's a problem and they need to put a new one up, or a bigger one up... Or if they need a new shed or new garage for equipment out there, you can't do it, because we don't allow them.
And the ski shop trailer, that would be also there, too bad.
So, I'm going to go through and look at accessory structures and uses and put them into appropriate limitations, that's my plan.
Jeremy, is one of your overall plans to sometime do the whole zoning ordinance over?
Retirement project.
Like how that answer came out? Yes, it is.
If you thought the comprehensive plan was hard to write.
So he's doing systematically.
Well, okay, so that's, that's one, I do have cleanup ordinance, it's on my list.
Cleanup, yeah.
Is that an ordinance?
Only got a cleanup.
Oh, cleanup, the ordinance, not cleanup ordinance, yeah.
In sentences.
And then there's a section in the, in the, when we get to building height in the shoreline zone, there's this piece, about 30% expansion piece, that when DEP approved our ordinance, we had left in, they approved it anyway, and it just conflicts with some of the state standards.
Thank you.
With the current stuff, so I want to try to get that out of there, I want to clean that up, Steve's got to get me some more detail on that one, I'm just not up to speed on that one. Residential lot size, we talked about this before, for, I looked at, I've, it, this is a whole nother bizarre one, and I forget what zone, but you need to have 5,000 square feet per lot for single-family, one-family, 5,000 for two-family, and then, it's, I don't remember exactly the zone, but it was that you needed, if I wanted to do a multi-family, like, I could do a three-unit, and I only needed like 4,500 square feet, but if I wanted to do a two-family home, I needed like 6,000.
Doesn't make any sense.
None of it made sense to me, so I'm going to try to clean that up, and so, getting back to the lot size...
We're going to be going in the direction of denser development, rather than less dense development, yeah.
I'm trying, in the areas where we have utility and we have, I mean, people talk that there's a housing issue, and like Belfast has worked on housing stuff, and they're allowing accessory dwelling units, we allow accessory dwelling units in most all of our residential zones, so we already have a lot of opportunity for people to do a little more housing on their property, I just don't think people are acting on it and doing it, so...
There's actually a lot there, if you start looking.
There is a lot there, you're absolutely, there's a lot, there's a lot of houses all over that have accessory dwellings, it's true. But I was looking at B1, BTR in particular, because we're talking about the parking lots in Knox Mill, and then when I look at, that's an interesting one.
Oh, go ahead. That is Village, Village Residential is 10,000 square feet, it's, single-family is 10,000 square feet, two-family dwellings, 7,500 square feet.
Per dwelling.
No?
Total?
That's what it says, two-family dwellings, 7,500 square feet.
There's a lot of, like, in sections of the ordinance where we left off units?
Per dwelling, thank you.
So sections that we left off per dwelling in some, that it should be there, I mean, it's just like those weird, weird things, there are, from, from section to section. But getting back to BTR and B1, we have no lot coverage, building lot coverage in the BR, BTR, nor do we in the B1, and we talked about this, you know, B1 does not have any minimum lot size for residential at all, nor commercial. BTR, no minimum lot size for, for non-residential, but there is a minimum lot size for residential.
So you just have street frontage requirement? You should just have street frontage requirement?
And they could cover, you can cover your lot 100% in BTR.
Yeah, I remember that.
And so what I'd like to do is, I'd like to try to get, we talked about this briefly before, when I was talking about the parking that we're getting from Matt Horn, and the reality, why do we have this minimum lot size for residential of 1,500 square-foot per dwelling unit, when we don't have an open space requirement, we don't have anything, so really, they can cover the whole lot with building, they can cover the whole lot with parking, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, and so I'm going to try to either go down, make this consistent with the B1, or just get that 1,500 down to 1,000 or 500 square, I don't, I don't, frankly, in this zone, where you can cover your lot 100% with building, I don't quite understand why we have a lot size requirement for residential, I just don't, it doesn't make sense to me. So, I'd like to, in the downtown core, try to, and I kind of consider this the downtown core, I mean, it comes up to here, but this, remember, this is Lion's Way? This is Lion's Way, and then we got the sewer department right here, like, that's all sewer, it's not going to ever change there, this is really, I consider this really, most of this, kind of like right here at, at Norton Street, consider that really, for the most part, the same as B1, but how aesthetically looks.
Norton Street has residences on it, too, doesn't it, one whole side? And the school on the other.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just throwing that out there.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm working on that one. Temporary sales of food or merchandise, that's one that we don't do very well at, and we did do a hawkers and peddlers ordinance that went to the voters last year, last year, and I found all sorts of issues with that one, and it's a real bear, so I'm going to try to come up with a temporary sales of food and merchandise.
What's that, food trucks?
Food trucks, or, yeah, things like that.
So, you know, with the wastewater property, and maybe the school property, instead of creating zones for those, can we just exclude those from zoning somehow?
Building town property?
No, you can't, what, what a lot of, most towns do, and I was surprised it wasn't this way when I came to Camden, is government in institutional buildings like that, you have like a government zone, or government institutional district, that's what most communities have, we've just included those public uses allowed in these zones. Yeah.
What's she thinking behind that, Mark?
What were you thinking?
What's that?
What's your thinking behind that?
Just to separate him, you know, when we were talking about the school...
The middle school?
The middle school, you know, the zoning was an issue, and it's...
Height, right?
Well, the height, but then, then the Marie Taylor School, it was...
Parking?
Yes.
Zoning.
We did change that to allow some commercial activity in former schools as of a certain date.
Yeah.
But that's the way that ordinance demands it, by all these certain dates, and it's like, oh, my god.
It's all over the place. Yeah, it was like, specific for certain people and certain projects. Pretty, pretty clear. I can look at those things, Mark, if you want, I just don't know, I mean, if we had a...
I, I don't know what benefit it would really have, I just...
Yeah, I'm not sure it would at this point.
Yeah.
And then we had talked about, oh, another issue, and this maybe is pertinent to Lime Rock and Coalcore, that whole area, and down to Belmont and Jacob's Avenue, drainage and stormwater issues are pretty severe in that area. We don't have any provisions that limit someone's ability to cover their lot with impervious surface, so pavement, pavers, building, we have a lot, building lot coverage, so you can only cover your bill, your lot with a certain-sized building, but outside of that, there's no provision that would say, that would prohibit someone from covering their lot with pavement, we don't.
Wow.
And that, that has contributed to this problem, I think, in this area, and it's an odd one, that we don't have that.
Because most communities would have that.
Most communities do have, regulate the number of impervious surface ratio on a lot, so, I'm likely going to try to do something on that, I don't know if that'll be ready for June, it's probably going to be ready for the next, next time around, because that's going to require, I've already talked to, about trying to get an intern, to look at engineering intern, to try to assist doing modeling of what we've got out there already, and see how, you know, I'd like to see what everyone's lots are already at, and then figure out how best to approach it. It's a tough one.
Environmentally, I mean, environmentally, that would be a great thing to be, it's only going to benefit the town, right, I mean, we've got a lot of surface water runoff.
You know, I got a couple of complaints the other day, up on, up on Jacob's Avenue area, drainage, been on Belmont, I'm dealing with a handful over there, and it's all the same.
There's a lot of water in that neighborhood, there's a lot of water in that neighborhood, and the streams are, you know, full, and then in some locations, we got streams or culverts, large culverts that drain to a smaller culvert in some locations, and it's, you know, I don't know what needs to be done, I mean, maybe we have to do storage of some sort down the road, I don't know, it's, it's a mess.
Do we have projected, I mean, one thing we know about climate change is that it's going to be getting wetter.
Right.
I mean, do we have any idea of what the projected levels are, you know, if we've got issues now, what are they going to be 10 years down the road, and if we're making upgrades to the stormwater system, are we actually taking into account the reality of...
Yeah, I mean, I'll be getting an engineering student to do this, and not high school students.
Yeah, you need someone who can model it, but...
That's what it is.
Can I just quickly ask where the lighting ordinance stands, if anything, because people keep asking me about it?
We will see when I meet with the select board next, next time.
Okay.
That is on my list of things, to approach them about. The demolition delay ordinance is on the list.
Yeah, yeah.
Adult use, retail, products manufacturing, testing labs and nurseries on the list. And medical marijuana's on my list. I'd like to formally allow those medical faults. We, we haven't done anything with the medical piece, I haven't had anyone ask, but we've gone down the road of allowing adult use gross, but we aren't, haven't gone down the road of adult use, or the cannabis, or the medical gross, so...
So lighting ordinance is at the bottom of all of those?
What's that?
Lighting ordinance is at the...
I'm not sure that's the case, but...
I mean, I've kind of told people, you've got a lot on your plate, and there are a lot of things, and we're concerned about pushing too many things through at once, so we haven't forgotten about it, but...
But the Energy Committee doing on that?
Energy Committee's not doing anything on lighting, and they're, that is not in their work plan.
So this is the only board that has anything to do with lighting ordinance?
Yes, the, the Energy Committee.
Because I'm reading stuff from them all the time about it.
Well, you're probably reading about the streetlights project, right? So that's an energy-saving, energy-saving and money-saving project, so that's why they're involved in that one. But they went to the select board, the Energy Committee, for their work plan. They kinda went through their work plan, and the select board said, no, lighting is not, lighting ordinance is not the purview of the Energy Committee, that is the purview of planning development and the planning board.
Oh, okay.
Which, so, that's, that's still on the, on the list.
We have a draft one worked out. I mean, we've, we've done most of the legwork.
We have a draft one, I think it needs some tweaking.
Yeah, yeah, but...
And I'm gonna just, the select board's gonna give me some direction on what they want me to move on, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I can't do them all, and, you know, some of these, if you got a handful of people that are pushing an issue, and it's just a handful of people, I'm not sure that means the select board is gonna be going for that.
Yep, yep.
Remember the, oh, the retail, chain retail coming up, when we did the chain restaurant? That was a hot one.
And we're all, yeah, and we're all thinking it's not an issue, and now here comes...
We said we'd work on it this next year and get it in.
Here comes fat face. So we've got our first chain retail store on Main Street now, so it's not a hypothetical threat anymore.
That was an unexpected one.
Yeah. So those are on my list. Are there any that are your priorities, of the ones that I just said?
Well, I was gonna bring up the chain retail, I think that we had...
Okay, that's, I put that back on it.
Yeah. I think you had a fair number of people in the public who care about it, as well as people on the board, but...
I was a little taken back by how many people were concerned about it.
We know that, we know people are concerned, they've already come and talked to us about it, right? So...
We said we didn't address it, we said we didn't do something.
So from...
This isn't a priority, but like, at some point, you talked about the medical, but there's also, we did, we haven't addressed the retail, the manufacturing, and the lab testing.
I mentioned that?
Yeah, you did mention it?
Just now?
Okay, yeah, so that's on your list.
That's on my list, and I likely, that will be probably one of my priorities on my list. And we'll see what the select board says, but, so, I mean, honestly, I think demolition delay, I think that should move forward. I mean, the Historic Resource Committee's been very concerned about that for a long time, and I think, I think we owe it to them, or I do, I mean, they put a lot of work in it to at least draft something that we can get to voters, because, I mean, ultimately, all these things, it's the, people vote on this thing, it's not just like, you know, five selectmen vote on it, and it happens, and everyone votes on it, and...
So, we're, we're still calling it the demolition delay?
Demolition review.
And not the demolition review process?
You can really...
I just put demolition delay on here, I haven't...
I think he's got a point, though, as far as marketing. Demolition review is less...
Sounds good.
Well, we're gonna change it slightly, so the review was actually involved in the process, rather than it just being a period of delay, right? I mean, that's what we were discussing, wasn't it?
It always envisioned a review, but there was no teeth to it.
Yeah, I think, I think...
So there's some teeth getting put, so you want some teeth put into it, I mean, that's kind of what...
No, I think the idea is that it's, it's, what you, I think his, Mark's point is more...
I think the point is, okay, when it becomes, when it becomes an issue that has to become, come before the board, then it gets discussed publicly. When it's a delay permit, then it's just saying, well, you can't demo this for 45 days to give people a chance to maybe do something about it. Well, nobody knows about it, nobody's talking about it, and it's not public. So they just have to wait 45 days, and then they demo it.
That's true.
So we'd rather see a review.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Sounds good, so, I mean, you think that's, should be a priority, I, I think personally that we should try to...
I mean, I think we're gonna do something, let's have a review.
Does the middle school come up?
Mm-hmm, okay.